It's seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting to a bitter. Please bow your heads for the invocation. Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
We will forego the roll call. Everybody is here this evening. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of September 3rd, motion be in order.
Make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. I can't tell you which one went first, Karen. Karen being in another room. Any discussion on those minutes around the motion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on non-agenda items. We would ask that you state your name and try to hold your comments three minutes. Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak at this time on non-agenda items?
No one is present.
Okay, thank you. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. We have no public hearing this evening. We go on to items for consideration, which we have six this evening. The first one being consideration of Richmond High School band booster banner, Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richen Band Boosters to have a banner across Main Street, also on 19, and a temporary signage that would advertise and direct people to their seventh annual pumpkin craft and vendor sale, which is scheduled to be held the weekend of October 3rd and 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. each day. Council approved both requests previously.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the special event application for the Richmond Band Boosters for an across-the-road banner from September 18th through October 4th in conjunction with their annual pumpkin craft and vendor sale on October 3rd and 4th.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Do we give them their pick of which poll they would like to do since we have a brand-new poll?
I certainly can, I think because they're closer to the high school.
Yeah.
They'll probably go with the traditional.
Yeah.
Finally, this year we have two sets so that they wouldn't conflict with the cemetery walk. Unfortunately, I do believe the cemetery walk has been canceled for this year.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any audience participation?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. We have a second motion for the other signs.
I make a motion to approve the special event application from the Richmond Band Boosters for temporary signage in conjunction with their annual pumpkin craft or vendor sale October 3rd and 4th. The signs placed at the city limit signs will be allowed beginning Friday, September 18th, and the applicant shall work with the city staff on proper placement of the signs to minimize any site visibility issues.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I just have to say that it's been a joy to hear them practicing still.
Yeah.
Yes.
You can hear them, yeah.
That they're still, you know, moving forward with stuff, so I hope success on their event.
I think we just did that video for them, but now they've, the...
I think they were going to. I'm not sure. I know he had planned on taking it.
I wonder if they're having, now that they...
Now that there's gonna be a fall season, yeah.
The governor approved football last week. I wonder if they're gonna be performing at half times. Be interesting. Anything else on this? We wish them good luck. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of purchase of road salt seasonal backup. Mr. City Manager?
The city of Richmond currently participates in the My Deal Road Salt program through the state of Michigan. My Deal is an extended purchasing program which allows Michigan local units of government to use the state contract to buy goods and services. Under the My Deal program, the city is required to take a minimum of 80% and up to 120% of the amount requested. This year, administration is requesting council authorization in advance for the purchase of up to 660 tons of road salt. At the top end, the expense would be $32,109 if the 660 tons are purchased. The staff recommendation, there is a typo there, that should be 660 as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the expenditure up to $32,109 from Detroit Salt for the purchase of road salt for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Winter season with expenses charged with appropriate line item, salt purchases, DPW, general fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this?
No discussion, just a question that if they needed to purchase more salt, would they come back to us again?
Jim?
Yes, if we go over this amount, we would have to come back.
Okay. Just because I know we budgeted for more than that, so would we not approve?
Well, we already have 300 tons sitting in our salt barn to start with that we didn't use last year. If you recall, we upsized the salt barn considerably by moving it back behind DPW operations, so we have 300 tons to start with.
Okay, so this should be, we probably won't need to.
Well, you're gonna cross your fingers that we don't need all of it.
I said something, we probably are.
Yeah, here we go. We'll blame it on you, Jamie. Jim, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I have no additional comments, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this?
No one's here.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of water service line survey. Mr. City Manager?
The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle, is requiring all communities, community water supplies to create a material inventory of the water service lines. And the portion of the service lines that we would need help with identifying are those areas between the curb stop and the house. We have a good inventory of our, the mains in the street and the service lines up to the curb stop, what we commonly call the curb stop, which is usually a foot in on the sidewalk side. I want to make it clear, and before I get to that, DPW has created this flyer that's in your packet tonight that we intend to put in the water bills that will explain to the residents how to take a picture of their water line and assist us in developing this inventory. It won't go out to all houses, certainly houses, newer construction. We know based on building permits and proper building procedures that we know what the service lines are of those. It's just for certain older homes, they will get this flyer. We're asking them to cooperate with us so that we don't have to go into their home and verify what the water line coming into their house is. If they can simply find it, take a photo of it, and text that photo to us, it'll help us greatly. And then people, you know, during this time, we also won't have to go into their homes. This is a requirement of Eagle. I want to make it clear, the city of Richmond does not have any issues with lead, have never had any issues with lead service lines, but this is a requirement that Eagle is placing on all municipal water suppliers, that they start to develop and maintain an inventory of what the service lines are. And so this is our public service directors' work to develop this flyer that would go out to each individual homeowner with a home in the right age bracket. We'll also do a video showing people how to locate their service line and take a photo of it. Certainly, if people have issues, they can call our DPW and we'll assist them, but the bore of these that people can just, if they can find them in their basement, take a quick photo of them, it'll just help us get through the process.
Thank you. Is there a motion for further discussion?
I'll make a motion to authorize administration and DPW to include a water survey flyer with the next water billing for each water district.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Jim, do you have anything to add to this?
The city manager said it pretty well. The, but just to be clear, this, this requirement from Eagle, it was basically driven due to lead issues, you know, Flint certainly is a big issue, and he had clarified, we do not have any history of lead service lines or lead contamination issues in our water distribution system, but that's still being driven by this, the concern that municipalities aren't aware of what their service line materials are made of, and so they're not proactively able to replace lead service lines. But this is still a general requirement to all public water supplies regardless of your history and concern with lead in the drinking water.
Thank you. Some questions. Do you know the age of the homes that are gonna be tested or that we need to take pictures of?
Well, generally speaking, anything from 1987 and newer has no, has very clear history of copper water service lines being installed in lead-free solder, so definitely anything newer than that would not be, we already have enough information on that, but you, we could, we're actually, don't have a specific date. Into the 70s, we were using copper, but we don't have, there's no definite year when we said, oh, you don't use lead service materials anymore. Sometimes there were galvanized lines in the, say, the 60s and 70s, but we have a pretty good history. We're probably gonna stick with the 80s and older, just so we have kind of a buffer area knowing that realistically it was the 50s and 60s and even the 40s, as early as the 40s where many communities quit using lead as a whole.
Do you, have you identified how many leads that's gonna be, how many homes are involved?
It'll be approximately 50% of our services, which is about 1,200, so there are about 2,500 in the system. We've already identified half of those, the materials, so it's approximately 1,200 homes in the city.
Okay, and we're getting reimbursement from the state, of course?
No.
Oh, thank you. Something we can pass on to council or our state representatives? Again, mandating programs that are unfunded, which they said they couldn't do anymore according to that lawsuit a few years ago?
Yep.
Any other questions of Jim? Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion? Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this?
No one.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of the purchase of in-car camera. Mr. City Manager?
The city council is scheduled to consider the purchase of a mobile cam in-car video camera for the police department. The fiscal year 2021 police department budget included funds for the purchase of this camera. However, the cameras have gone up in price since we did the budget, so we're short about $671. However, the chief feels we have that amount within the budget, so we're good with that amount. By going with the same camera system that we've purchased previous years, the city then does not need to purchase additional software or hardware to download and archive the recordings, but will utilize the existing system. And by doing that, we'll save funds, so we are recommending that we waive the purchasing ordinance requirement and go with the same system that we've used in the past.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir. Just, this is a, like the city manager said, a system that fits within our system and our software and our hardware now, so the minimal upgrade costs are minimal because of that.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make the motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements under section 64-53D and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement with L3 Mobile Vision 8 for one flashback HD in-car camera in the amount of $5,171.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comments?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table? If there's nothing else, my mayor pro tem is reminding me, it's a roll call vote over there by pointing at it, and I have it circled real big again.
Not that it matters.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Green?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Stravich?
Yes.
Grindel?
Yes.
Rix?
Yes.
Born?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Thank you. Okay. Item number five is consideration of the purchase of election equipment. It's called express vote and signs. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider authorizing the purchase of several items related to moving the voting location for precinct two. As you recall at your last meeting, we agreed to and passed a motion, a resolution to move precinct number two, which is everyone who votes south of Division Road will end up voting actually in this room and probably the room behind us that day. But due to that, in the past, we've been able to share the same accessible voting machine that we use for anyone that needs help with that. It's called Express Vote, the one we have. And so because we can no longer share that machine, we'll need to purchase one for this location, and that's a total of $4,070. We have new directional signs that we're purchasing, the signs that say "Vote Here", and some of ours actually for both precincts were getting old. One of them broke last election, so we're actually replacing them for both precincts. That'll be $376. And then also, we need to mail new ID cards to everyone, so that's another roughly $1,300. These are just the costs associated with moving. So we've provided a motion to amend the agenda, or amend the budget due to these weren't part of the budget when we did this, as we were just starting to get into the COVID, and then there's three motions to approve the purchase of these items.
Thank you. The first motion would be to approve a budget amendment. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 and increase the appropriate line item elections equipment acquisition from zero to $5,750.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Any audience participation on this, Karen?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also need a motion for the new voting machine. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of an express vote from E S and S in the amount of $4,070 to be charged to the appropriate line item, general fund elections equipment acquisition.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion on this item? Any comments from the audience?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another motion for the signs that will locate the voting areas. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to authorize the purchase of signs from Doranville Sign in the amount of $376.80 to be charged to the general fund elections equipment acquisition fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? I noticed that one side did fall down on its own. I'm sure, I think it rusted out on one corner. I think we got our money's worth out of those signs. Is there any audience comments on this?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. The final motion for this item to purchase the voter ID cards. Is there a motion?
I'll make a... Motion to authorize $1,300 to Printing Systems Incorporated to create new precinct two voter ID cards with the expense charged to the appropriate line item, general fund elections equipment acquisition.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just have a general discussion. So I believe based on everything that we approved in printing new voter ID cards that going forward, we will have the two, well, two different precincts separated.
Correct.
And if so, are, how many additional people do we have to hire to do, or, you know, help out? Do we?
It varies by election, and so even though we probably won't be hiring new people, I mean, we're always hiring new people as election workers come and go. It was a matter of space. It was, we had election workers enough to staff the election, it's just we were too crowded to physically be in one building anymore.
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking when I go to vote, and it pretty much does seem whoever's at working precinct one is doing all of that, there's really no overlapping between the two precincts.
No.
So, yeah, it's not really costing us any additional employee costs, which is...
Correct.
So, and just generally, I think it's probably a good idea. It's even, even outside of the pandemic, just to have...
The last presidential was very tight in that building. It's, you know, and then with the social distancing requirements due to the pandemic that just put us over the edge. But even, even at the regular one on a presidential, you know, some of the smaller elections aren't so bad, but the presidential, that last presidential at the community center was, was really tight.
Thank you.
So let's go back to Mike's original comment about, from here on, we will use two separate buildings?
Correct.
For all elections or just for all elections?
Yes.
Is that as long as the COVID or period?
Right now, our plan is to do it period.
Regardless of COVID or any...
Yeah.
Okay, so, and, so it's gonna have, the voter ID card itself, you either have, you either vote in one or you vote in two.
Correct.
The reason we have to do new cards is because there's gonna be a new address on the card where to vote?
Yes, my card...
That's the only reason?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
My, my current card, if I pull it out of my wallet?
Yep.
Would tell me to go to the community center.
Yep.
And it needs to now tell me to go here.
Okay.
Yeah. Because otherwise, you have to go back and forth and pass a resolution each time, and you're gonna have all these expenses every...
Well, that's just it, that's why, yeah.
You're gonna have, if you don't keep them here and split, and you then went, like, 'cause certainly for a city council election, you could get by with one precinct, but you're gonna have all these costs, and people will not know where to, if you keep moving them back and forth?
Mm-hmm.
They're not gonna know where to go.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and, but really, the driving factor is the community center's too small for the presidentials anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And this is too small to make this the only voting area.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we couldn't do it one in this room and one in the other room?
No, it's, they're just not big enough. Any comments from the public on this, Karen?
None.
Thank you. You don't have any comments? This is the last, this is your job, and you're doing it fine, so...
Uncovered it pretty well.
Yeah.
You know, we can't keep flip-flopping back and forth because we would have to send out ID cards every time we made that change. If we combined both precincts for the small elections, I would have to send out notices to the affected voters.
Okay.
Yeah, and these and the other two, like I said, we've done this before. I mean, when we look back at it, we realize there was about that five-year period where we, the north end voted here and the south end voted at Old City Hall. You know, certainly, it's nice to have it all at one location, but that building is just not big enough anymore.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I have one more, kind of brought up on the employees that are needed. So for the smaller elections, we're still gonna need the same amount, or do we start out, do we ever send people home? I guess is my, my question, like...
We start out smaller for the smaller elections.
Okay.
Karen knows, has a good idea of, like, for the presidential, how many they need, and then for the smaller ones, you know? And often, for the smaller elections, we don't have a separate AV counting board, and like, the AV counting board for the presidential election will be in the community room. So that room is already, at the larger elections have already been used, you know, which is why we can't also have it precinct one here, is that during the large, every other year, whether it's a presidential or a state election, gubernatorial election, the AV counting board is always in the community room. Now, the smaller elections, we don't have, we don't hire the staff to come in and man the AV counting board. They just, the poll workers from precinct one and the poll workers from precinct two then just feed the absent voter ballots through as time permits, you know? So we adjust staffing levels through that. So like at a regular council meeting election, we don't have a separate AV counting board.
Any, anything else on this?
Yeah, just, just one more. And the only, because we have the city council in off years, and I was a big proponent of that, so that's probably maybe why I'm asking a lot of questions. Maybe it's time to readdress that, just if we ended up, because now we basically have an election every year, right? Well, every...
Every year. Every November.
Every November.
I mean, for, for city council?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, if we...
Because nobody's running this year, and then next year to be group, and then...
Right, right.
Nobody will run the next year.
But we have, but, yeah, but we have a federal election this year. So I guess my point is that we could eliminate two, the odd years by lumping them in, which we had a lot of discussion on that before. I don't necessarily want to do anything now, I was just thinking about that. If election costs keep going up, maybe, maybe it makes sense, but, but I, as a, kind of a reminder, I thought it was good because I think that people that are really interested in local government and cities will come out for that election, and I would hope make better determination and better thoughts behind who, which candidates they pick for city council, so...
That can be a discussion at a round table.
Yeah.
It's not germane to...
No, not at all.
The $1,300 for printing, but definitely, we can put that on the next, what, October?
Quarterly, yeah.
Yeah, the quarterly.
I think I'd have to dig it out, I'm pretty sure we put all that information together.
Maybe we can get the, the minutes from when we did discuss that?
Yeah, yeah.
The last time to refresh our memories.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else on this motion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. And our final item is item number six, consideration of board appointments. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider making appointments to the EDC and Planning Commission.
Thank you. I would ask that you would confirm my appointment of Eric Gordon to the Economic Development Corporation. Is there a motion?
I make a point, a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Eric Gordon to the Economic Development Corporation to fill a vacant term with an expiration date of July 1st, 2026.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported.
Oh.
Any discussion on this item?
Should I have given him a choice of doing the 24 or the 26?
No, I like the 2026 better. I didn't tell him it was for that long, but he's in for the long haul anyhow now that he's bought the, his building.
He did attend the last meeting anyway, so...
Yes.
No, he's gonna be a great addition to the EDC. Looking forward to his involvement there. I'm sure you are too, Jamie, you sit on that board.
Yes, he already provided some great ideas, and it was fun to have him. Great refresh for us.
Right, yep.
Yep.
Yep. Any other discussion on this item? Any audience comments on this item?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye? Against? Motion does pass. I'd also ask you to confirm my appointment of Sean Misco to the Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sean Misco to the Planning Commission to fill the vacant term with the expiration date of June 30th, 2021.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Discussion?
I think Sean will be a good fit. Lifelong resident in the area, now lives in Richmond, teaches in Richmond, coaches in Richmond, and like to get involved, and knowing, knowing him most of his whole life, I think he'd make a great addition to the, the board.
Yeah. He called me, I didn't call him. That was a reversal. Usually, I call people to see if they'll serve, but he called me and said, I want to do something for my community. And I was very unique in the 20 years that I've been doing appointments.
He's been, he's been talking about it, so.
Yeah.
The right information got to him, so.
Yeah. So I said, well, I've got one for you if you really like to get your feet wet.
Yeah.
Plan commission, you know, can be pretty tough sometimes. And a lot of us on the planning commission are in our older years, and it'd be nice to get some young blood like that in there, hopefully long-term city resident, and help us out, learn, learn the ropes before we all retire, you know. He could be the senior guy in a few years. So appreciate him contacting us. Is there any audience comments on this item?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye? Against? Motion does pass. We thank both of them. Miscellaneous matters from the city manager, sir.
I just have one tonight. Hopefully, Chief Teskey's still in the other room. 10 years ago this evening, we swore Chief Teskey in as our chief of police. It was baptism by fire as it was on the eve of good old days, and so he hit the ground running, and I appreciate his service here for the last 10 years and look forward to working with him in the future.
Congratulations to the chief.
Thank you. It was, it's been a good-
Hey, I didn't go to audience comments here yet, come on. Go right ahead, chief.
I have this long-prepared speech, no. It's been a good, good run so far, and I'm probably not going to be able to do another 10, but the support we get from the citizens and city council has made this a kind of a good run for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
Uh, no, that's it for me.
Okay. Moving on, council comments. Dennis?
Nothing tonight.
Jamie?
Nothing.
Emily?
I just wanted to say that I noticed the new signage on the bike path.
Oh.
And it looks really great.
What, what is it?
The new signage, the new stop signs along the trail.
Oh, did they put them up?
Yep.
Okay, good.
And also, you know, the, the road crossing, so it looks really good.
Great, great. I'll pass that on to Troy in the truck.
Yeah, thank you.
Rob?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Michael?
Yes, being a part again of the city manager evaluation committee, would appreciate if you could turn in your forms that were handed out at the last meeting, hopefully by next meeting this month, so.
Rob's here, too.
Yeah. That would be, that would be helpful. And then we'll, like, like normal, we'll tabulate them and provide you with all the results and the comments.
Very good. Coming back my way, we'll go to the calendar. Today being September 8th, we have a planning commission change, which normally we would have held the meeting on the 17th. We are moving to the 10th, this Thursday at 7:00, right here at City Hall. And then the VFW on 32 Mile Road will be having a inside-outside sale, bake sale and home decor, 50/50 raffle daily. The sale begins September 11th and ends through the 13th. It is open from 10 to 5 at the James Coleman Post, 34339, 32 Mile Road, for those who need to punch that in. This is to help our veterans. Due to the COVID, the veterans have been able to volunteer their time making money for the organization, and that has been closed due to the COVID. And so they need all the help they can get financially to keep the place going right now. So this is September 11th through the 13th. You can donate September 9th and 10th between 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM, just drop stuff off at that address that I gave you, or you can call Barb at 727-6553, or Darlene at 727-1902. So very, very important for our community to support that. We have a drive-in movie, something new that Parks and Rec and the city and the Tifa are all working together. It's going to be on Saturday, September 19th, beginning at sunset. My understanding is, is people can come over around 6:00 or so and get their spot, but they have to have a ticket beforehand.
Correct.
It's not open to the public unless we don't have enough tickets picked up. And then it'll be first come, first served after that, I'm assuming, John.
Yeah.
But you can get those tickets to, Monday through Thursday now. We're closed on Fridays now for the winter. And you can call 727-3064, which is our Parks and Rec, and get yourself set up for one of those tickets. The parking is limited. It'll be held out in the festival grounds there, the good old days festival grounds, weather permitting. It is free, but it's going to be mandatory for social distancing. So you will be able to pull your car out, again, as long as the weather's there, pull your car right out to the field. It's going to be a 55-foot large screen. I believe that's the largest screen available-
That they have, yes.
-in Michigan. So it's going to be a big screen. And they are going to be showing Dora in the Lost City of Gold, which is, I thought that was a cartoon. I hear my grandchildren talking about Dora. It's not a cartoon. It is human beings.
Action-packed movie.
Yeah, yeah, so, and it is sponsored and made possible by our Tax Incentive Finance Authority. They are funding this. It's something that we're trying to do in the community since we've all been kind of tied down with all this COVID and all the rules and regulations that have been put upon us. So that sounds like a great event. And that, again, is September 19th. It is free, but you must have tickets first. And I believe that's it for now. Our next regular city council meeting will be on the 21st at 7:00, right here, and on the 22nd is the first day of fall, so it's already here, the summer's shot. It was a very quick summer for a lot of people, even with the COVID. So we hope for better days. Okay, we're moving on. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? Be you not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. There's no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye? Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us this evening.